Good evening, everyone. We will now follow this meeting to order. This first meeting of two twenty twenty-five. Our invocation will be led by Councilman Jones.
This is a prayer that was entered in George Washington prayed a prayer for our nation. She ever prayed. Almighty God, we make our earnest prayer that thou will keep the United States in thy holy protection, that thou will incline the hearts of the citizens to cultivate a spirit of support of the nation and obedience to government, and entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another and for their fellow citizens of the United States at large. And finally, that thou will most graciously be pleased to dispose us to do justice, to love mercy, and to demean ourselves with charity, humility, and a pacific temper of mind, which would account for riches of the divine author of our blessed religion, and without a humble imitation of whose answer in these things we can never hope to be a happy nation. Right in our supplication, we beseech thee to Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice of all.
We thank you for coming out to be with us tonight. And on that note, you are down to item number four, Christmas acknowledgement.
I would like to mention the Monticello Christmas Committee that did such a fabulous job bringing in commerce here at Monticello. We all last month talked about what a great job it was. And I have a little something I'd like to read, but I see three of you, you all stand up.
Two more, I'm waiting.
Michelle, Amy, and Nan. You think they'll be there in a minute or two?
These are leaving.
You say them too?
Yeah.
What you say them too?
Yeah, but I'm not standing though.
You should, Brian, you should.
You're a big part of it.
Yes, okay.
All right, I'll get you back.
A Christmas to Remember in Monticello. In Monticello's heart, where the seasons align, a magical Christmas by design did shine. Thanks to a team with hearts of full cheer, they gave us a season we'll all hold dear. Michelle Arseneau, with vision so bright, led the charge with unwavering might. For eight long years, she paved the way, a guiding star through the night and day. Often alone, she stood her ground, but this year, her efforts truly astounded. The crowds grew tenfold, far and wide, filling our streets with joy and pride. Businesses booming, gas tanks filled, Monticello's spirit truly thrilled. The lodging was full, the restaurants feast, a celebration of commerce from west to east. Brian Bachmann, with passion and skill, helped bring the parade a moment to thrill. Corinne Bachmann, his wife who's not here, and is honored, I think, with energy to spare, assisted in ways that showed she cared. Pam and Barry Kelly, steadfast and true, worked tirelessly to see it through. Nan Bachmann, smile and steady hand made the season brighter, just as planned. Amy and Tom Davis, with their creative touch, made the holiday glow and meant so much. Together, they all worked side by side, turning dreams into reality with pride. So here's to these champions, and I wish we could have some champagne to toast. Our gratitude we share for making Monticello a place beyond compare. With laughter and light, you've set the tone, your efforts have made the town feel like home. From the city of Monticello, we raise a toast to the ones who've given all, given us all something to boast. Michelle and her team, the best by far, you make Christmas shine like a star.
And I'll take a moment since I got a spot up here. We need to make sure we've remembered to thank the city employees who pitched in tirelessly to make this thing work. Monticello Police Department, that it doesn't happen without them, with support of the Sheriff's Department. All three of those groups coordinated and really made this thing come together. It could not happen without their support, so thank you all.
Thank you to Rico also, he came in on a Saturday before he went hunting.
Ah.
And then Patty was also one of our volunteers.
And we always need volunteers, please.
But we thank everybody. I also want to mention real quick that we raised approximately forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars in vocational scholarships issue.
Thank you, Brian, for that mention, I was gonna say it too, but I appreciate it. No, 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 I appreciate you doing it because I had forgotten, thank you.
Well, thank you again to everyone for having participated in such a blessed Christmas in Monticello. Moving along, item five, public comment.
We have one, and it's Mr. Charlie Hughes. Good afternoon. Do I need to state my name and everything?
Just your name, fine.
Charlie Hughes. Look, I'm here today, I am a very concerned citizen. In my neighborhood, there's a lot of drugs and loud music that's going on. And I've not have had enough of it, and there's nothing being done about it. On New Year's Day, the guys had the big speakers, had all this noise. I called the police. The young one, he came out, he rode around, he wasn't telling to turn it down. So I called altogether about thirteen, fourteen times. So I called back and asked the dispatcher, I said, is that, is what the officer said? He said, he said the music not loud, we're telling him to come by my house. He came by my house and got out, the music was just loud. I said, I said, the ordinance is a hundred, hundred feet, and this is fifteen, one thousand five hundred feet. I said, can you help me cut the music off? He said, you don't have to be ashamed of yourself, keep calling about loud music. And he said, he said, I'm not gonna tell them nothing. I said, well, I'm gonna keep calling him. I kept calling, every time I call, I pull around the road, wait for him to come. He ride right away, where all the noise were, he would not tell them to cut it down. So one of the times I called a girl by the name of Renate, a little skinny girl. She came out to the police car, and whatever he told her, then all the people sitting in that area start playing the music loud. So I just kept calling, he just rode through, he would never tell nobody to turn it down. And I spoke to the chief about that. All I'm concerned about, all the drugs going on, it just doesn't make sense. And I called Kirk Hayes, who owned one of the trailer parks. I said, will you talk to your, the people that live in your place about the loud music and the drugs? He said, I paid city plenty of money, I don't have to tell them nothing, they do what they wanna do. So that's what Kirk Hayes told me. So what, as I bring to conclusion, I'm asking the city, would you consider, would you please consider in making their landlord have to be held accountable for this drugs and all the loud music, they should be held accountable for it. And I talked to the people that pay, people's rent thing about them. And they said he gonna look into it also because this is not right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll mention while we were in between, we had two more members of the committee, Christmas committee come in, Pam Kelly and Corinne Bachmann.
Okay.
We had women's clubs.
Sorry, you missed the recognition.
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay, consent agenda.
Before we do the consent agenda, should I wait, make it a agenda item or add it in with the consent agenda? I was with Florida Louisiana Department of Public Safety class. I got an email, they have an open second one, March the sixth in itself. Say that they're sending information out in January, we're up in a meeting now, so I need to get it approved. So whenever they decide to send a agenda, I do have already ready to go for that second class, U.S. class, Florida Louisiana.
Okay. All right, and we'll add that one to the consent agenda. Okay, now, can I get a motion on the?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a copy of the minutes and everything. Does everybody else have it? I just don't.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you took it out, you can have mine.
I did, no, 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 I've done it, read it, I just thought it was gonna be good.
Oh, it's okay.
I have an extra one here.
That's okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, now, let's take a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda. Item seven, old business. Okay, legislative issues, city manager.
Yes, we needed to bring this up to this meeting tonight.
Yes, sir.
Our legislative priorities that we have brought it up at a city council meeting. We're actually going after more money for water main replacement and rest stations and generators. And that's what the city went after last year. I don't think anything got pushed real hard on it, we're gonna push real hard this year, so if we can't get it funded.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Monticello Jefferson County Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Mike Daniels.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse my sweaty nature, I started back that old exercise program tonight, so I came straight from there. But it's a pleasure to be here with you, and I'm gonna also extend my thanks to the Christmas Committee, and what a wonderful event that was, I heard so many great things about it at the chamber too, so. I'm here to follow up on a request that was made by Floyd Fagley a few months ago for a grant or donation back to the chamber, I believe it was some old business. And I was not here at that initial meeting, and I believe there was a little bit of confusion, so I wanted to just clarify and answer any questions you guys might have too. Sometime in twenty twenty-three, the Tourist Development Council, which used to be a part of the chamber, went to the county, so that, all the tourist money that would normally be coming into one pot, which was under the chamber, is now over with the county. And so the chamber stands alone with how we do our funding. We fundraised by the Watermelon Festival and from our membership dues, and then any other grants that we may get, whether they be local or otherwise, through different companies and things like that. And as you know, the chamber is the central hub of business here in our city. And we do a lot of things, we definitely support our business community, we help economic development and growth here. We do events that help our city to shine. We do lots of networking and lots of, we are really trying now to make sure that we include everybody, all businesses and all nonprofits, we really are trying hard to connect and grow connected, this next year especially. So I believe the request initially was for two thousand dollars from the city. And we are a central part of representing the city, our city of Monticello. And I just wanted to come before you and ask that you please reconsider that request. We do not have a big fat bank account of money. The Tourist Development Council with the bed tax and that kind of thing, they have their money. And what they're doing, we're working side by side, but of course, the TDC is responsible for tourist development. They're doing most of the things tourism-wise. So they're printing maps and visitor guides and things like that, they go out to the rest stops and different hotels and different places around the state to highlight Jefferson County. The chamber is solely focusing on our immediate county, our community, our businesses in our community. We wanna grow that, we know that strong businesses, a strong downtown, strong business community across the entire county makes for a stronger county and a stronger city. So I'd just like to request again that you consider that two thousand dollar donation back to the chamber. Any questions for me?
So you define the tourists as, can you just repeat that? Because I sit on that, and it's not just global, it is to promote and bring people.
Into the county, that's right. The Tourist Development Council, part of their goal is to bring people to our county, put people in our hotels, try to drive business to our restaurants and businesses and that kind of thing. The chamber's role, we want to help support that initiative, but we're here to help our businesses be stronger. We're here to provide networking opportunities for the businesses, so that we can all work together and grow together and support each other. We're here to provide education opportunities for our businesses. We're trying to do different classes and things that someone might wanna start up a business, a young entrepreneur or whatnot. So we have lots of initiatives going on with our young professional group. We've got all of our member luncheons that we do, so that people have lots of networking opportunities. We publish, and we're coming up, our business directory, which is, it'll have ads and things like that for local businesses, and it'll have a list of all of our chamber members, but that's different than the visitor guides that the Tourist Development Council. They're doing a guide that goes to all the rest stops and things like that.
I haven't been inside.
Okay.
I sit on the board, I'm just trying to.
Okay, I was told that, I was told that was already in print, so that's why I brought it up, but anyway, okay. So I just wanted to remind you guys of the differences and know that it used to be all one, under Katrina, Katrina wore both those hats. And so now it's very defined on the roles and what the two different organizations do. So they raise their money through the bed tax, and we raise ours through fundraising efforts and with our membership dues.
And I thought when we met earlier in a budget meeting, that we had said, we agreed that the two thousand could go to them, but then it never didn't make it into the budget. So I don't know, is there anywhere you can pull two thousand dollars from?
It's a, I think it's a modest ask for a good, good return.
If we're trying to pull fifty-nine, where we gonna get to? I'm just saying, if it wasn't in the budget. And so you don't get any money from the tourists?
We, we get a small grant from the Tourist Development Council, yes. That's where the earmark for the Watermelon Festival. Because we advertise outside the county to bring people in for the Watermelon Festival.
Ms. Kathy, is there any where you might define two thousand?
Well, it's up to the council, if the council tells me to find it, I'll have to find it. We are stretched very tight this year.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, we will.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Montevilla update advertisement for resolution, Mr. Winge.
Well, this is something that we've been working on since around twenty eighteen, when we went after the money for the solar array, and, I'm sorry, I'm on another one already. When we went after the money for Montevilla was in twenty twenty-one. That was when I was back for interim for those three and a half months. We were able to get it funded, but there were some things that needed to be done, and I'll let.
Yeah.
Listen, you've been working on this.
And Mitch, feel free to jump in. Good evening. So I believe it was October, November council meeting, I came here, the last time I was here. We had bids for this project, and you guys approved to award it to the lowest bidder, it was under the budget price that we had, so we were all very excited about that. And then after that meeting, Mitch was like, I'm sorry, what? He was not aware of this project because it was started before his time, and apparently there were some things that needed to be done for your ordinances, that Bruce had started, but then got sick and had not completed. And I was not aware of it, Steve wasn't here at the time, so he didn't know that it hadn't been done. And Mitch didn't know either, so this is to kind of go back and do the legal things that need to be done with this resolution.
So procedurally, where we're at with this is, there's no changes to the project, anything like that, from what was discussed back in October. All this is, is taking care of the statutory requirements, so that we can actually do this. And to that end, I would request approval of this specific resolution. And then we need to set a meeting probably on February seventeenth to approve the construction, because the statutory scheme says there's a thirty-day window during which protests to this resolution can be heard. And then ten days after that, we have to convene again to basically say, yes, we can construct this. It's a odd statutory scheme. I've incidentally not come across other cities doing this.
Nor I.
It is what is required, and since we've discussed this project kind of ad nauseam at this point, that's all I'm asking for today, is approval of the resolution. And then we wait, if we get any protests at the next city council meeting, we probably will hear those. And then ten days after, providing that this project is still moving forward, we approve construction.
So that would be February seventeen?
Yes, is everyone available on February seventeenth, it's a Monday.
It might be a holiday, it's President's Day.
It's President's Day, excuse me, then February eighteenth would be the appropriate date.
All right.
Fine with it?
Yep.
Madam Mayor, I can obviously request a special meeting, but you can't.
Oh, you're gonna throw that in my way. Okay, all right, so I need a motion first on the resolution.
Make a motion that we accept the resolution twenty twenty-five dash one, authorizing the extension of utility in compliance with the Montevilla Septic Sewer Program.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we will accept the resolution for the Montevilla project. Okay, and now the next meeting date on that resolution will be February the eighteenth? Okay, everybody's okay with that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this will be on a second resolution to approve construction of this project per the statutory scheme, which for some reason requires both.
Are you saying that's unique to Monticello, our statutes, or it's a?
No, this is a, this is a Florida statute that, I have no doubt that it's been done previously by other cities, and it's possibly been done in a manner where they just claim an entire field. For example, here we're only doing the short little stint of the Montevilla. Most times when there's a sewer extension, it's a lot larger. And I suspect that what happens is when those things happen, it's kind of baked into that process. It's odd to be doing it for one that's this small, but it's necessary.
Okay, the time, we have a designated time, it's six o'clock, okay?
I'm fine with the six o'clock.
Okay, all right, there we go.
And Madam Clerk, I appreciate you keeping an eye out for any protests that may come in. I don't anticipate there will be many, since this has been discussed with the residents of Montevilla quite a bit, but you never know.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that this, I'm glad this project is finally moving forward.
Yes, sir.
There are hundreds of millions of dollars available in Florida for septic sewer projects, because it's so important about protecting our environment to get people off septic tanks. A lot of people don't realize that, I mean, they're stuck in the old ways, but all you have to do is look at the effluent that comes out of our wastewater plant that looks like a glass of drinking water, because it has to meet drinking water standards, and then look at what comes out of a septic tank. I mean, it's, I'm just glad we're finally moving forward, just maybe we can get more done.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right, the email came, do you want to parade permit? Okay, well, it just says needs a signature.
Yes, I just, we discussed last time, we signed the resolution and all of that for everything we needed to do for the MLK parade, and it's been approved. The package come back from DOT for everything, so I just need the mayor's signature on that permit, which is in the packet.
While we're on MLK, did we get a banner, are we all gonna be in the parade?
We have ordered a banner, so if y'all wanna be in the parade, you will have a banner.
We will?
Uh huh, I ordered one.
Okay, all righty, is a truck available?
I think he said you could use a city truck.
Yes, a truck.
And that parade's at eleven.
All righty, Mr. Ryan, please, with the city manager search update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
On New Year's Eve at five P.M., we closed the solicitation for your city manager candidates. We now have twenty-two applicants.
Okay.
That will be considered. I prepared a quantitative analysis of the resumes submitted, and I'd be happy to share briefly what the scoring that I did on the applicants. If you have the score sheet in front of you, you have the applicant's name, the residence. For education, we provided a scoring possibility of five points for an MPA or equivalent, four points for a bachelor's, and three points for an associate. We also have a scoring for the city or county manager or assistant, with two years or more of service, five points for that, with a bonus of two points if they were a Florida manager or assistant because of the nuances that we have here in Florida with some of our quirky laws. We also have experience outside of the city manager realm, whether it's department head or director, five years or more experience for five points. We have a five-point criteria for a smaller community, and I put it at fifteen thousand as the baseline for that criteria. Next, we had the supervisory experience, five points. We also have grant experience for five points. And I know another issue that was very important to you all was experience in water and wastewater, they had an ability to obtain five points, and as well was intergovernmental work. So that's the rationale on the score sheet. There will be some questions that we will need to address on the twenty-first about some of the candidates that, you know, are we going to accept an associate's degree with experience as a manager, those type of issues we need to talk through on the twenty-first. As I mentioned early on, as a senior advisor, we do not perform background checks, that's not our role. Mr. Winge is pursuing that process. I can't stress enough, between now and the twenty-first, to use this time to use Google. Google is your friend. Look at your candidates, you'll be surprised what you'll find out about them. Look at social media.
Yes, yes.
You, I had a community where a council member supported candidate X, and staff pointed out that that candidate had some issues that came to light through the Google search. And that's something that you need to know before we start. And that's something that you need to know before we start talking who's going to be asked to be interviewed. So again, Google is your friend. Lastly, we talked, I think, early on about the actual interview process. And it is a public meeting. And I think the city attorney will concur. And under Florida law, the public has to be afforded an opportunity to be interviewed. That's my story.
This is very helpful. Thank you.
That's very helpful. A lot of work here.
I want to commend Ms. Radford for her job. She did a phenomenal job in, in, in providing the documents in a very timely manner. Any questions you may have? Again, the twenty-first is our workshop where we'll go through the twenty-two applicants see how we determine who to be asked to be interviewed as well as background checks. Don't put the cart before the horse because you may find through the background that you don't think we want this gentleman from Arizona to be flying here on our nickel or whatever. That's my story.
Okay, and then workshop date again, please?
January twenty-first.
Okay.
I believe it's at one P M.?
One P M., January twenty-first. Do we know where?
It's over at the annex.
It's gonna be at the annex in the.
It's on, it's on your packet there. Item number twelve is there.
It is item number twelve.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Number eight, we already did.
Okay, all right, thank you. Number nine, our request to council. Chief Mosley.
Everything's in my executive paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Um, hang on. I'm just curious. Number fourteen, and your complaints had thirty-two? What kind of complaints are those? What kind of calls?
Let me go back and see. You said number?
Fourteen. Had a, it looks like eight, nine, eleven, and the thirty.
Okay, that's, that's informational complaints. That's what they call and that could bear between anything. And the eight that you see there was where the Sheriff's Department transferred calls to us. That was nine-one calls. So informational complaints could be maybe a marketing dog or it starts off as an informational complaint and end up being to something else.
I just, that number just looked kind of high and I thought, what is that?
We get a lot of complaints.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, city manager?
I handed all of your sheet earlier. There was some grant funding that was available. We went after that with the help of Felicity. And these are the grants that we're going after. It's almost five million dollars. And when we had our legislative meeting and I spoke to our representatives, I did bring up the issue we're having with the DOT bid that runs through Monticello that's causing us all kind of problems. And it's actually caused a problem where we're gonna need to put a box incorporated down there. That's included in this grant here. And what we'll do is reach back out to the representatives now and let them know we've applied for this grant. And hopefully they will help push our funding through for this.
Thank you.
And I think I had, I had spoken to you all about, I had looked through our water tower maintenance agreement that we got into back in two thousand and around nine, something like that. And it's a schedule of what they're supposed to do in that agreement. And last year, we were supposed to have one of our towers painted. It didn't, didn't even happen. So I've been back in touch with that company. They are going to be here at the end of the week to start getting them prepped. And we'll have two of our, we'll have the Fourth Street water tower painted and the industrial park water tower painted in the next month or so. And the lift station down on nineteen North, the nursing home that's been going off for quite some time now. The contractor that's working on that has done an excellent job. And they're actually ready to do a startup on it the twenty-first of this month, so, which is, is great. Back to our solar array that we have applied for that grant back in, I think, like twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, eighteen. It's taken a long time, but it's finally completed. It's been completed for a while, all the file book that you have to do on it. And that project looks like it's saving us between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars a year. So I think we're gonna try to put together some kind of little ceremony or something over there. It's an impressive little solar array. It's not that big, but we are capturing a lot of energy. And I mean, we don't get a bill anymore. We're actually giving power back to the power company. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Heron.
I already said my piece.
Okay. Well, we want to really thank our chief, city manager, and our, our city attorney for the great work that you have done and that you are still doing. We are so grateful. Okay, reports, councilmember reports. Mr. Bachmann?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I have to report, I want us to know that the gentleman that we awarded the certificate to, Mr. Dennis Gallin, has passed.
Oh, really?
Yes, and also Ms. Villa Mitchell. What's that? Pittman Mitchell, wait. Okay, she is also passed to, I think, at ninety?
Six.
Ninety-six. So we have some people that really, Monticello must does something. We grow old around here.
It's the water.
We just won, we just won an award for a water.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Councilman Evans?
I want to thank chief and city manager. The second harvest got canceled. I guess it was some kind of mix-up with the holiday schedule. But you can put on your calendar, tentatively, the twenty-four. And I will get in contact with you as that become firm, but it's being reset to the twenty-four. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I thank the council for their, for their leadership class also. Anything? Railroad project that's just about complete. Now, see, they got a lot of prep. They getting ready to pave pretty soon, didn't they?
Yep, they're getting ready to pave. And it's not this week because it's supposed to rain at the end of the week. It'll be next week. Everything will be done. It'll all be clean and fully completed by the seventeenth of this month.
All right, Madam Clerk, I know you have a hard job at one. We don't have utilities collect. Do you have anybody in mind? Are you gonna hire anybody?
I do have some people in mind. I surely do.
You knew to this job yourself and that job there. I know that's a wham-dam, but.
Where's that clerk go?
We're holding it together.
He didn't go.
Okay, all right, have we advertised?
We have, and I've done some interviews, and I have some people in mind.
Are they experienced?
Yes.
Because utilities can get kind of like.
And smart.
Pretty good. Well, that's what we need.
Smart is what we need.
All right. I'm gonna leave that alone.
Okay, Councilmember Richardson?
I just have one thing to say. Earlier this week, about eight-thirty in the morning, I had a knock on my door. And it was a city employee, and I'm not sure which one, but I want to thank him because he asked me if I knew I had a leak out front of my house where the meter was. The water was running all the way down to Brian's house. It even passed and kept on running, running, running. He said, I've turned it off because I know you don't want to hire a water bill. And whoever that was. Tell them thank you because I caught a plumber. And that afternoon it was fixed, so I didn't have all that water running out. So thank you to whoever that was. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. All right, so item eleven is election of the twenty-twenty-five mayor and vice mayor.
Question before we get into that?
Yes, sir.
I guess I should have brought up in the open, I thought. So what did we decide about this review committee? Bring names for the trial review? I'm just saying, are we just still putting it on the table? If we are, we can continue.
My understanding was we were each to turn in a name or two suggested to be on the committee. Was that right?
Yeah, we didn't really go so far as to say bring it to the next meeting or, or anything like that. Or let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting. We just sort of.
We can do it the next time.
So we can put it on the agenda for next meeting?
If you'd like.
And each of us bring to the table?
If that's what the council would like.
Yeah, I'll put it. Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Okay, and now item eleven is election of the twenty-twenty-five mayor and vice mayor. And the floor is now open.
For motion that we let Councilwoman Gloria Cox as mayor.
Do we have another on the table?
Councilman Richardson had expressed interest as well. I don't know, have we, do we do it one at a time or do we do two at a time?
Okay, go ahead and put it on the table. See if we nominate.
Okay, I'll nominate.
What you do, you close that nomination on yours and then we vote, and then we open nomination on hers and vote for that.
Okay, all righty. Okay, the first nomination is for Gloria Cox, me. So all those in favor of, ma'am? All, all those in, in favor of my being mayor again, let it be known by, aye. Okay, so we have three votes for, all righty. Okay, now we have the nomination for vice mayor.
You can do that too.
Okay.
I'll nominate him to Mr. Richardson for that.
I second.
Okay, all righty, so all in favor of Councilman Richardson being the vice mayor? Let it be known by saying aye. Aye, okay, it's been properly moved to second. That Mayor Cox would be the mayor for twenty-twenty-five along with Vice Mayor Richardson. Okay. With that out of the way, next meeting, workshop, one o'clock, January twenty-first at the annex room of the commissioner's room. And then the next regular council meeting is would be seven P M. February the fourth.
Madam Mayor, do you need me for the twenty-first? I didn't think so, but I'm gonna check.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have a, a stop time for that meeting? I'm sure they would like to know. We kind of talked about five, and then some people said, well, my take all the way to seven. There was discussion, but no real stop time.
Well, I've never known it to be an exact stop sign. We just know we don't want to stay all night.
Yeah.
What are you talking about, city manager workshop?
Yes.
Well, you won't because I'm leaving.
At five?
You're wrong, good bet.
Wait, wait, now.
That's right. I'll give you right there to the table.
Okay, now the twenty-first, we're meeting at one.
Yeah, and what time is it gonna be over?
Okay.
Can we say four?
Oh, Lord, no. When it's over, when it's over.
Okay.
It's the ones and pull them out. You don't take all day. Don't take a P S D.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, I'll see it now.
No, no, one o'clock.
Yeah, I'm at that one.
Okay, seven o'clock is the next meeting.
Regular council meeting.
Next council meeting. Okay, for, because I know some of these are already gonna be weeded out with Mr. Ryan. So it shouldn't take.
I think it's gonna take hours and hours.
No, 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 no.
If you do the research yourself and looking, plus here, it won't take hours and hours. Maybe one hour, maybe take thirty minutes. Depends.
Okay.
Just because they qualify what or that, that don't mean they gonna be good. I'll tell you that. We spent that already. I assure you that the people gonna be able to stand up and do what we need them to do.
I would, I, I did a little Googling on people as well, and I was strongly encouraged some Googling of these names. It only takes a couple of minutes and it's very enlightening.
Another thought might be if you were inclined, you could call a mayor for a community that the manager might have served to get his or her insight.
Well, now we have another issue on that too because it's a rule sort of followed now that if somebody calls, they don't want to give a bad report because some things can come back to haunt you.
Be surprised if sometimes a one-on-one conversation might give you some insight.
Okay, all right.
Effort is uncalled.
Okay, now.
Well, we should come prepare. Take, you know, diligence and take time to review the process. Make it sound like now we do. I mean, we here for the people. We already upfront saying we gonna run through it in thirty minutes or whatever.
Well, we had that before. Then we had one over at the cabinet, but then take all day on that one, didn't we?
No, yes it did.
Okay, well, whatever time it takes to make a correct decision. And if we make a decision and it's a wrong decision, quick, fast, and in a hurry, get rid of it and kill that council.
Okay, let's see here.
But I agree, it's incumbent on us to do our homework.
Yep. They don't work out, don't let them set up no one in for all money, nine thousand dollars. We need to make them sign the file.
All right, so we, we, we're so thankful for another meeting. We're thankful to see the wonderful, wonderful Mr. George W. Pittman with us again, sitting there so proud with his legs crossed. Always, always. And Ms. Betty, good to see you. Okay, so if all hearts and minds are clear?
Bam!
Okay.